Let's begin by just giving you an opportunity to make an introductory statement and tell us what you want to accomplish in a new term on the Palm Beach County Commission.
Well, thank you very much. Again, Greg Weiss, County Commissioner, Palm Beach County, District 2, and is currently serving as Vice Mayor. I think, you know, over the past four years, serving the citizens of Palm Beach County under some, at times, very challenging times, had an opportunity to help provide leadership during some unprecedented pandemic, if you will, that we haven't seen in 100 years. But, you know, elections, as you said, are really about looking forward and what we'll accomplish in the next four years. And I hope we'll have an opportunity to talk about what we have accomplished already. But looking forward, obviously, the crisis of affordable housing, workforce housing for people in not only Palm Beach County but throughout the country, looking at water, both water supply, water quality for Palm Beach County. And I think we also have, you know, economic development opportunities so that people can earn a decent wage working and living in Palm Beach County. So those are, those are some of my priorities. But additionally, you know, I mean, there are other things that I will continue to try and provide leadership on. One of the areas has been with the area broadband and broadband availability. That came up out of the pandemic and took action to help the county move forward with our mesh network program, but also through the Association of, National Association of Counties, serving on a committee, Presidential Select Committee, on broadband, promote policies that will impact not only Palm Beach County but our nation as well in providing high-speed internet access for all citizens of the United States. Residents, I should say, not more than just citizens and businesses for that matter.
Right. Okay, good. That's a good introduction. By the way, have you, have you met personally met your opponent, Jeffrey Skeen? Have you seen him on the campaign trail?
I've never met him, never seen him. I go to, you know, I participate at meetings in his community in Century Village. I've never seen him there either. So fortunately, or I've never met the, I've never met the man. So don't know much about him.
Okay. As I see in your questionnaire, you're also the Chair of the Governing Board of the Palm Beach County Solid Waste Authority, right?
I am.
Unglamorous but very important position and responsibility. I'm interested in the subject and I wanted to ask you about, you know, Broward County to your south, slightly bigger place, is in the throes of creating a tax-supported regional solid waste authority with the cities as participating members. Is that, is that sort of eventuality in the, in the future of Palm Beach County or not?
I don't, I, right now, so we provide the solid wastes for everybody in Palm Beach County. So it's not just unincorporate. We, we do contract with wholesalers to provide the residential pickup. But the cities provide either through their own municipal services or some contract out. But all that ends up with the Solid Waste Authority facilities. And I'm sure you're aware, but we are very progressive in Palm Beach County with the foresight of previous boards. We have two waste-to-energy facilities in Palm Beach County. So we're no longer, and it's been going on actually for a number of years, waste directly does not go to the landfill. It is converted to energy. It's incinerated, that causing, you know, turbines to be able to be run. That creates electricity. That electricity both runs the plants, but also is being sold back to FPL, creating an income stream for our waste authority. And now, at this point, only the ash ends up in, in the landfill. So it prolongs the life of the landfill. The cost of landfills is expensive. It's a lot of land. It's a lot of work. And so this is also saving money for the taxpayers. Additionally, the last thing we did, started working on a couple of years ago, was being able to utilize the ash in roadbeds. And so we did a study with FDOT. They reviewed what we are, what we're producing. A pilot program was run and we're expecting to get approval from them so that even less of the ash will even end up in the landfill. And then we will then require that some of that ash be utilized in the roadbeds in Palm Beach County. So even minimizing our waste streams. So very proud of what we've accomplished here and will continue to accomplish.
Okay. I'm going to open the floor for questions from Randy Schultz or from Dan Sweeney. Go ahead, gentlemen.
Dan, you want to go ahead?
All right, Randy. Go ahead. I'm sure you've got you.
Morning, Commissioner. How you doing?
I'm good, Randy. How have you been?
Your comments remind me of when there's still the bicycle trail up by the landfill known as Mount Dyer where people get their morning rides in.
Oh, yeah.
All right. In your questionnaire, you said you oppose the GL's land swap. But you voted to continue it until May, when if you had voted the other way, the proposal would have been killed. If you oppose it, why did you do that?
Because I want to learn more about the water issues. You know, clearly, I've taken a leadership role in our board on working on water. And if there's an opportunity or a silver bullet, if you will, for Palm Beach County as it relates to water, water supply and water quality, then I want to learn more about it. I'm not a, I'm also, I think, and as I stated after the meeting, there's never, as far as my recollection, I've never opposed a postponement by an applicant on their first request. It's fairly standard operating for us. And at this point, they, they asked for a postponement so they could address water issues and I'm willing to listen. But
But again, if you, if you oppose it, you know.
I don't, I don't
Why continue? You said on the questionnaire, you oppose it. You don't see the benefits.
I said I don't support it. Currently don't support it. But I want to see, I want to see what they have and what they're, what they're able to come up with. I don't think it's going to change my mind, but I'm willing to listen. And I think there's, I think there's, there's something to be gained from just the education. I think what they brought up, some of the ideas that they brought up. And I, my expectation is, you know, whether that project goes through or not, there are things that we probably want to take advantage of.
Sure, sure. But if there, if there are water benefits, then why did every conservation group, which presumably also advocates for water supply issues, oppose the swap and wish it to be killed?
I, you'd have to ask them for why they
Oh, I have, I have. And they say because there's absolutely no benefit in this to the agricultural reserve area. And this is simply a dodge by GL to be able to build 1,000 multimillion-dollar homes and get 277 workforce units, which is a fraction of what they avoided building over the last decade by lobbying against the requirements.
Well, I think, you know, for me, to change 20 years of precedence of policy in Palm Beach County as it relates to the ag reserve, something would have to come to a level which this has not raised, has not risen to it in my opinion at this point. So
One more, one more question related to this. A year and a half ago, you voted with the majority to allow the Lake Worth Drainage District to sell undevelopable land to, so that GL could build homes that otherwise wouldn't be allowed to build. Again, every conservation group opposed that. Right before the vote, you received campaign contributions from most of the principals on all sides of that issue, at least the benefit side. How do you explain your vote then? And how do you then square that vote with what you claim now is a wish to protect the agricultural reserve area?
So that vote was based on
The staff, the staff opposed that, by the way, you may recall.
I do. If you recalled, a number of the issues that were raised in that issue. But in talking with our county attorney and our standing on that matter, at best, we were advised, at least I was advised, we had a 50-50 shot at winning that, our argument at best. And the issue at hand was, I think there was potentially up to over 600 acres of land, which would have been 600 homes. And they were, came in at 300 and change, I believe, if that's correct, 300 acres.
Yep.
And it was, to me, it was to minimize the damage that was going to be inflicted, or I shouldn't say damage, but to minimize the amount of impact that was going to have had we lost the case. Which I, in reading, I mean, if you read, if you read the documentation.
I did.
Which it was clear that we had, we had included rights-of-way for canals in calculating space for both development potential as well as in conservation areas. So we had already said that there was some value to these. And the additional, additionally, specifically carved out an exception for road right-of-ways that would not be included. So we were, it was silent on the fact of, of the, of the canals. So I'm not an attorney. My background's in technology. But in, in just as a layman, looking at that and reading it, I think the argument to the court would have been very hard to make. Because my understanding is, if you specifically call out an issue or not, it, it require, then you're setting a precedent saying, we're specific about this, but we're not about, about this other. So therefore, we didn't include it. So I might, I was trying to protect the county from a further loss. And that, and that's where I ended up on that deal.
The great number of benefits from that will go to large landowners in the reserve area who are on the board of the Lake Worth Drainage District. You've got campaign contributions from them. Was that coincidental?
Absolutely. I mean, they're, they're individuals. They're on the, they're on the board. I don't believe they, they don't obtain any
According to Tommy Stroud, the director, if this sale had not gone through, it would have meant significant assessment increases for the large landowners like them.
I was not aware of that.
Hmm. It was out in the news. Okay, that's it for me for now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks very much, Randy. Dan, Dan Sweeney?
Hey, Commissioner. So you, you've mentioned that affordable housing is a big issue in Palm Beach County. I'm Palm Beach County resident myself. I'm well aware of this fact. You also mentioned the, the bond. Can you just get into a little bit of detail about how exactly that's going to address the issue? And is it enough to, to address affordable housing in Palm Beach County?
I'll answer your last question first. No, it's not enough. But it is, it's another tool in, in the toolbox, if you will, and another funding source. I believe if the voters were to approve this, it's going to create a revolving fund that will be able to be utilized to help with gap financing on, on programs. When we talk to developers about, you know, why there's a lack of affordable housing, it has to do with a funding or subsidy on their side, if you will, that can help allow more of these units to be built. So this will provide a fund, a revolving fund where they'll be able to borrow money to help fund those workforce affordable housing units. And then as those funds are being repaid, that money can then be rolled over into other additional projects. So in addition to the other funds that we put into affordable housing, this year, we dedicated $10 million of ad valorem funds to be used in grants and other types of programs. This will, this will create another tool for us to be able to do that. It's, you know, the need is great. This is not going to be, this is, this in this case is not a silver bullet. It's not going to solve the problem, but it will help make a decent down payment on addressing it.
So what else needs to be done in order to solve the problem?
I mean, I, you know, there's, there's a lot of things we can do. I mean, one of the things we are doing in addition to funds, I mean, we're, we have a density bonus program that provides for additional density for developments when they include affordable and workforce housing in them. We can look at, you know, our infill opportunities. You know, there's a lot of large shopping centers that are no longer performing. And, and so I think it's going to be a combination of policies and, and funds to help address it. But it's, it didn't happen overnight. Unfortunately, what we saw though, was an increase of rents and property values that did accelerate very quickly, destabilizing the market and exacerbating a problem that was, we were already dealing with. But it's gotten to a level today that we really do have to take extraordinary actions on it.
I have, I have a follow-up on Dan's question, if we, if we can. Can you give us a hypothetical of how this program might work? Because we're going to have to take an editorial position on it at some point. And I, I think I agree with Dan that at this point, it all sounds kind of vague. And I think if it's vague, you're going to have a hard time convincing the public to vote for it. So give us, give us an example of how this would create, you know, affordable housing somewhere. What would be the procedure?
Yeah. And, and I, just Randy, I want to say that your point is very well taken. In the past, when we've gone to the taxpayers, we typically, to be successful, we were able to go with a specific project and say, we're going to be able to do this or that. And it's specifically explained to the, to the voters what we're going to be able to do. In this case, it's creating a fund. So let's say somebody comes in and they're going to, they're going to do a project and it, 100, we'll use round numbers, $100 million of that. They're going to put together a stack of financing from various sources. But in order to be able to build, let's say, 25% of those homes to be affordable or workforce, meaning that they're either rent-controlled or price-constrained on what they're sold for, there's a, there's also a piece of financing for that. So in helping to fill that gap, so that $10 million gap, let's say on that project, to be able to build those homes, that's what this is going to be able to do. So we can loan that money out and, you know, at a reasonable, it won't be at a market rate, it'll be below market rate, because that's what it's going to take to maybe be able to put these projects together. But it, that's one of the drivers when the business community came to us and said, you know, we need help. This is one of the issues that we run into when we're trying to build development and include these, these types of, of homes. The issue is, we don't, we can't, we need this gap financing funding.
Is, so it really amounts basically to a subsidy?
It does. It's a, it's a subsidized part of financing. I think we may have laughed more. Randy, you're back. Okay.
Yeah, no, I just, there's a lag here. So sometimes I'll do a disappearing act in return. So don't worry. But I could hear everything you said. So
Okay.
And why didn't the commission simply go back to what it had some years ago and enforce the policy of saying, if you build this project, you need to have this many affordable housing units and enforce it, which didn't happen the first time?
Well, it has, I mean, there, since I've been on the board, we have not waived those requirements.
Yes, this predates you.
It does. So I can't speak to what they were doing in the past. I know. And the other thing, I think, to be, to be fair to the previous boards, you know, if you go back to 2010, after the financial crisis, there was not an affordable housing crisis in Palm Beach County at that time. If you recall, prices had fallen through the, you know, fallen through the floor. And pretty much everything was affordable. But very quickly, the market recovered. And, but during that time, we still had our affordable housing program in place. And, and I believe they probably were waiving the requirement at that point in time because there was no development or very little development going on. And they were trying to encourage what they could.
Yeah, probably, probably. But the program was put in place to avoid an affordable housing crisis.
I understand. I understand. But, you know,
And if you stuck to it, you would have less of one. Not you personally, but
I understand.
The commission collectively. The other, the other related thing is just this week, you passed a, an ordinance that requires landlords to give 60 days notice if they're going to non-renew a lease, cancel a lease, or raise the rent by more than 5%. Why is that number so low, given the rent increases we've heard about? And since this has been coming for at least a year, why did you wait so long?
Well, we brought it up last spring. It took, it took time to get it developed. We also had to run it through the League of Cities because we wanted to cover them as well. So municipalities, we needed to include, you had, we had two other things going on too. We had other municipalities that also had enacted their own ordinances. We needed to make sure we didn't displace what they had done and create any issues in that regard, but also to cover everything else. So we needed approval from the League of Cities. The 5% is, I believe, was just adopted because that's what other communities had adopted. I agree. It is relatively low. But on the other hand, I think in the case of, you know, as, as somebody, you know, trying to address it, 15 days is what the state required. It was only 15 days. You can, you can raise rents with 15 days' notice in the state of Florida. You can, you can terminate a lease with 15 days' notice in the state of Florida. So we, it's, it was the right thing to do. It was a reasonable thing to do. I think people, as leases are ending, the landlords, property owners are not deciding at the last minute, they're going to raise the rent and how much they're going to raise the rent by. They know in advance what they're going to be doing. And it's only fair for the renters to have adequate notice so that they can take an action on their own behalf. And as we know, the market is very tight in Palm Beach County. And so 15, it just wasn't enough time. So 60 days seems reasonable to me.
Okay, there, that's it. I lagged again. Sorry.
That's okay. What happened on my side is you disappear and come back in.
Yeah.
That's it for me for right now.
All right. Thanks, Randy. I'm going to change topics just for a second here. Greg, you've served on the Palm Beach County Canvassing Board. Obviously, the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners provides the funding for the supervisor of elections, who is an independent, independently elected constitutional officer. I've got a couple of questions in this regard. But, but overall, what's your level of satisfaction with the competence of Wendy Link, the supervisor of elections?
I 100% confident in being on the canvassing board, working closely with her and her staff. I'm 100% confident on the integrity of elections in Palm Beach County. And I think every resident should be as well.
Okay. You aware of the fact that a lawsuit's been filed by one of the unsuccessful Republican candidates for Congress in the 23rd District? This is the district currently represented by Ted Deutsch. He's retiring, obviously. And a woman named Darlene Swaffer has filed a lawsuit in state court suing, among others, the Palm Beach County Canvassing Board alleging rampant voter fraud in a Republican congressional primary.
Not aware of it.
Okay. All right. That's all I have for the moment. Well, I do have, I do want to ask you this. And you may have touched on this much earlier. But is there something specific, tangible that you want to accomplish in a next term that you haven't been able to do so yet?
I think, you know, in, specifically as it relates to water, it's, one of the things that I, I started with early on in my tenure was to have real-time water quality testing going on in lagoon. We're able to measure the salinity levels and temperatures real-time in the lagoon. So, and there's, that, I'd like to see that, that we expand that. Right now, the monitors are within a mile of the, where the C51, the S51 spillway is. They're about a mile away. We have a water quality sample done. We get that report monthly. It's done through the South Florida Water Management District. That sits right behind the spillway testing the water quality. I'd like to see if there's a way to get that done so that we don't have to wait a month to get those samples and, and retest it. But I'd like to see the expansion of that. We're also monitoring wild fish that are tagged in the lagoon and like to see that expanded, to have more monitoring stations for that. There's a, there's a lack of science, if you will, that has gone on in the lagoon. So I think that's, those are things that I'm going to be working on. And so that we can improve the water quality in the lagoon and restore the health of the lagoon. Additionally, is to move forward with projects. I mean, we have our, called it the chain of green, if you will, the sea of green, the islands that we're building throughout the lagoon to continue that project and expand that. That's had a noticeable improvement in restoration, again, looking at water quality in the lagoon there. So that, that's something specifically I'd like to, I'd like us to accomplish. We talked about the expansion of broadband. That's another area specifically I'd like to, to move forward on. There's the Affordable Connectivity Program, which provides for a federal benefit for low-income households. And to get, to get that taken up, looking to, I think, you know, it's an opportunity for, to really help move our community forward. If we're going to have a highly educated community, one of the things we have available to us that we didn't have when I was growing up, and I think you all, I mean, the internet now has provided not only access to information, but the access to learning. So a student who may not have the ability to go to Harvard can still see lectures from Harvard, can still see lectures by the most renowned people in the world. And I'd like to see, I'd like to see us expand on that.
Okay. I've got a tax and revenue question too, as well. And though I defer to my colleague, Randy Schultz, as being the authority on these matters. But we, we hear this a lot from, from letters from readers. So property values, not just in Palm Beach, everywhere, property values are exploding. When property values go up, the amount of taxable revenue for local government goes up. So residents rightly ask, why can't you lower the millage rate to a level so that it compensates for the natural rise in property values here, as opposed to using the increase in property value as sort of a windfall for government? What's, what's the answer to that question?
Well, government is not immune to inflation either. So costs are going up, the cost of labor, the cost of capital purchases, those are all rising as well. So, and which is of course out of our control. So unfortunately, yes, property values go up and, and our tax bills go up accordingly. I will say, although it was a small decrease in millage, we were able to provide for the first time in 15 years, a decrease in the millage rate for taxpayers in Palm Beach County. But I, I certainly understand their position. I'm a taxpayer as well. I mean, we don't, we don't get to not pay taxes just because we're elected. And, but on the other hand, there's a cost of living. And the thing I, people need to remember is, we want a high quality of service. We want the things that we want. We want the parks. We want the libraries. We want, you know, our roads well done. We want access to, you know, the highest and best of where we want to, where we choose to live. There's a cost to that. And unfortunately, you know, I, I believe, you know, that there, if there is an opportunity to try and save money for the taxpayers, I'm all, I'm always looking for it.
Okay. And I want to return very briefly to the $200 million loan fund for affordable housing. That's, you know, I, I know it sounds like a big number, but we know that in a place the size of Palm Beach County, and a subject like housing, $200 million may not go very far. and a subject like housing, $200 million may not go very far.
Right.
Tell me a couple of in-the-weeds questions. What precise unit of local government is going to actually administer the fund? And if the demand far exceeds the $200 million, how will the decision be made who gets the money and who doesn't?
So the fund will be, and we currently allocate funds to assist with affordable housing in Palm Beach County. That's done through our Housing and Economic Development Department. They have, within that department, they have a group that does administer these types of programs and grants, if you will. We receive funds through the federal government, from the state government today, in ad valorem dollars. And those are being administered by this group. And I'm sorry, the second part of the question was.
The second part of my question was, since the housing affordability crisis is as grave as it is, if the demand for the money far exceeds the supply, how do you decide who gets money and who doesn't?
Right. So and we've been doing this for a number of years. The proposals are analyzed based on the number of units they're going to be providing and the cost, if you will, to the taxpayers or to the county, you know, through the county funds. And their balance is done. And those that have the best in terms of return are the ones that are going to get priority.
I guess I didn't frame the question as well as I should have. Will the decision as to who gets money under this fund be made by appointed professional staff? Or will it be made by the elected county commissioners?
They'll get a recommendation from staff. They could, you know, the board could choose not to take staff direction on a project. But my expectation is, typically in these cases, we normally follow staff direction.
I see the clear potential here for political influence to play a role in the doling out of this money. Am I wrong?
I would think you're wrong. Because they won't come to us and say, well, here's a list of five projects. You choose which five, of the five, which one you want to approve. What they will do is, they will typically, they'll put out an RFP for a tranche of funds, ask people, in fact, we just did it this last week. There were two projects that got approved. There were four, I think, that did not meet criteria. They were considered non-responsive, that staff listed. And those two that were responsive and met the criteria, they were approved. So I understand your point, Steve, but we're not looking at a particular project and saying, okay, we're going to choose this one and not this one, and this one and not that one. That's not how it's done. It, staff provides a list, the amount of money being requested, explains why some got it, some didn't, and we move forward.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, but as you said, it's a subsidy.
It is.
And I think you're going to have people who want the subsidy. I don't, your point is acknowledged, Commissioner, but, you know, the commission ignores staff from time to time, correct?
We do. That's true.
Yeah, okay.
I shouldn't say we ignore it. We come up, we come with a different decision. You never.
I see, okay. I'm disappearing.
It's funny how he knows when that's going to happen.
Yeah. Hold on just one second here. Yep. Okay, yeah, well, as someone who's spent a lot of time watching local government in Broward County more than Palm Beach and in Tallahassee, you know, you put, with the best of intentions and the best safeguards, you put a pot of new money on the table, you know, there's going to be a lot of hands reaching for that money. So that was the point I was making.
I understand. Although I will tell you, you know, we put out another RFP. We only had one response, and in fact, my colleague, Commissioner Marino, in last week's meeting, or this week's meeting, was commenting on the lack of people coming forward as we've been putting out funds available, stepping forward. So and asking, encouraging people to come forward and to try and build these homes for us. So, but we'll get it done.
Okay. I think we'll wrap it up. I really appreciate your responsiveness and being here this morning, Greg. It matters. It matters to the voters. It matters to us. So appreciate that very much.
It's my pleasure to be with you all, and, you know, I appreciate the work that you all do, too.
Okay.
Good luck, Commissioner.
Thanks again. Good luck. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Bye.